Running to Apple, time is one oh two, and I call this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen for June, sorry, June sixteenth to order, and as a public service reminder, the meetings are always open to the public. Their meetings of the Board of Selectmen had conducted the ongoing business of the board. If you'd like to offer comment, there's an opportunity on the agenda to do so. When commenting, please state your name and title if applicable. If the meeting is interrupted due to disconnection, we'll do our best to resume not less than thirty minutes from the time of interruption. And we have Jen Heaton Jones here with us for the first item on our agenda, and I don't know if the screen share is enabled. Um, let's see. It looks like it is Jen, so we're gonna have Jen share her screen. And I'm gonna turn the floor.
Can you see my spreadsheet?
Yeah, if you can make it a little bit bigger, that would, that would be great.
Oh, too bad. Sorry.
That's good.
Let me just, I think that's all of the Sorry, make everybody busy, my apologies. So I was asked to support the backend information in regards to the proposal to reduce the annual transfer station permit. And hopefully this will give you a full understanding of what actually happened in twenty twenty-two and what is the proposal for twenty twenty-three that is being asked of you today. So I'll start with the blue section, which is the twenty twenty-two numbers that were provided to me by the town. So currently, the seniors in the town have a discount transfer station permit of a hundred and thirty dollars a year, and all others pay a hundred and fifty dollars annually. And the number of permits are reflected in this row in row C. Column C, uh, so you had three hundred and fifty-one seniors, three hundred and three regular pay payments for a total revenue of ninety-one thousand eighty dollars. The total cost of tonnage, and I've only illustrated the tonnage, all other costs are, nothing else would change in the following year in regards to the fixed costs for the transfer station. But the annual tonnage of disposal would change. So currently, the town of Kent is paying ninety-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents per ton that tons disposed of in twenty twenty-two were three hundred and eighty-eight tons for a total cost of those tons at thirty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. In the proposal, we would take the senior rate and the regular rate and reduce it potentially. This can all be discussed after I explain it. So a hundred and fifteen and a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Using the same number of permities, you have your totals to the right, forty thousand plus and thirty-seven plus. Then we expect that there'll be some folks who don't wish to bring their waste to the transfer station. They have curbside collection of their regular municipal solid waste. However, they would like to participate in organics. And we would charge them a twenty-dollar annual fee to access the transfer station to drop off their organics at no additional cost. The purpose of that would, one, is to cover the cost, and two, is to make it clear, nothing is free. And in the future, there's a cost to the town. Um, so we want the users to be in the habit of knowing that there is a cost attached to that. Um, we expect, and I haven't, I won't get into right now that there's kits and supplies that will be given to participants to each permatee by the grant. But there is a carry container that we will offer outside of the free items. It's ten dollars, it's less than the cost. We expect maybe half would purchase that carry container, so there'd be some slight additional revenue. So your revenue would go from ninety-one thousand to eighty-three thousand. It's a nine percent cha-change. You could consider a loss of seven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. However, this is revenue gain. Using the same number of tonnage, three hundred and eighty-eight tons that were collected in twenty twenty-two, I have three different scenarios. Worst case is, and the whole purpose of this pilot program is to see if we can get the residents to change their behavior and reduce the amount of solid waste that they're disposing of, household trash. And it worst-case scenario would be they reduce the solid waste by twenty-five percent. The tonnage would go from three eighty-eight to two hundred and ninety-one tons for a total estimated cost of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-six. You'd have a cost saving of nine thousand one hundred and eighty-seven of, in regards to the tonnage. So instead of paying thirty-eight thousand dollars in ton-tonnage cost, you pay twenty-nine thousand, so the difference is ninety-one. And then the difference between your revenue loss and your change in expense, you'd actually have a savings of one thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Taking two other scenarios, which are case studies. Um, this was, uh, this is actually the average thirty-five in some municipalities across the country. Um, to the town of Waterville, Maine was an example um, given to us by Waste Zero. They had a waste reduction in the first year of fifty-four percent waste reduction in tonnage. So you would see the difference between three hundred and eighty-eight to two hundred and fifty-two at thirty-five percent. So you'd have a savings of thirteen thousand dollars compared to the previous year. And the difference between your revenue and expenses are five thousand five hundred and fourteen. And if the residents of Kent did a fantastic job and went to fifty-four percent, you would see the difference here, thirty-eight thousand to eighteen thousand for a twenty-thousand-dollar savings um, in the cost of tonnage and a total savings of nearly thirteen thousand dollars. This is based on, um, again, real numbers here, based on the percentage of other communities that have implemented these programs and the cost of your, the, the amount of revenue you bring in based on the proposed permit fee. Of course, if we change these numbers, your total savings would change. So let's say you went to a hundred and ten instead of a hundred and fifteen, and you went to a hundred and twenty um, instead of a hundred and twenty-five, here's your changes here. Um, so worst case, you would have a loss and not a savings at twenty-five percent. I'm estimating that you're probably gonna see at least a thirty-five percent, if not more, and change. So you, you could make a decision based on um, the estimated. Um, and you, you could also be very conservative. The idea is to incentivize your residents to wanna participate and take the challenge. Every permatee, no matter who they are, and no matter what your rate is that you decide, will receive the hundred and four trash bags. It's not a mandate, no one's telling them they have to do this. But we're gonna ask them to take the challenge. We're gonna ask them to see if the town of Kent can reduce their waste, help save costs to the town, and they only have to pay for, in the following years. If we were to implement this into a permanent program, they would only pay for what they're throwing away, being responsible for themselves. And those who don't want to, uh, make the, take the challenge to reduce their waste, they're gonna pay for their waste. And so not everybody's paying for each other's waste, we're only paying for our individual contribution and generation, if that makes sense. So happy to take questions.
Which is how it is now, and I think Jen, your comparison to electricity the other night at the trash talk was perfect. So we all, um, pay for our electricity, right, through Eversource. But we, while we have, you know, some of the rates are the same, some of them are more competitive. We only pay, each of us, for the electricity that we use. Imagine if, you know, I had to pay for the electricity that, you know, this in my bill, that Kent School and Kent Center School and all the places that have their lights on a lot more often, or people who don't care about conserving, um, electricity would pay. And this is the exact same model, which makes sense to me.
It's moving ways to, in a sense of the utility, rather than pay, throw away as much as you want. And there's very little incentive, and, um, I, I don't recall if I mentioned this to a previous Board of Selectmen meeting, but Kent's very rare in our fourteen municipalities. There is only one other town that charges an annual fee like this. All the other towns charge a very small permit fee to access the transfer station, and the residents pay if they throw. And that's done either by weight of the bag or the number of bags that they throw away. Um, and then the municipality covers their cost um, through either the weight or the bag, um, fees.
So Jen, can you just?
I'm happy to take questions.
Can you just, um, change the permit prices back to where we had started? Just that we're having that conversation, cuz that was Rick. Jen and I had a couple of extended conversations about those permit prices, and that's sort of what we're making a decision on today. Rick, um, do you wanna jump in? Is Rick on the call? Yes. You wanna jump in and fill in any gaps, or your thoughts are sent from the boots-on-the-ground standpoint?
Uh, my only, let me shut the door so we don't echo.
And if you mute Q Jean, he might not have as much of an echo.
Uh, the problem I think that we're gonna have mostly is if we tell people that they can't put extra stuff in the regular garbage, that it's gonna have to go in bulky. How we're gonna be charging for every little scrap and stuff like that, so. People aren't gonna have cash with them or whatever. They've been going for a long time now, where they can throw everything in the garbage, like garden hose or scraps of wood, stuff like that, and these small stuff that the compactor can handle, if we're gonna be taking all of that out, just leaving what would be considered municipal solid waste, I guess, would be household paper and stuff like that, that's you're taking the food out of it, so there's not too much left that different paper towels and plastics that don't go. And I don't know how we're gonna see that, and if they're still bringing in black bags, and once we're gonna start making them open bags up, too.
I wouldn't suggest or need, the need to open anyone's bag. That's not, not necessary. It's, again, it's taking the challenge, it's a pilot program for the year to see if residents will take the challenge and utilize the bags that are given to them at no additional cost. In regards to bulky waste, I mean, there are items that technically are bulky waste, and they are currently having to pay for that bulky waste, and so you'll still continue to receive that revenue and fees. And it's to your discretion, you know, if something is considered bulky or not bulky, um, so that one can consider themselves throwing away the difference between household trash and a bulky waste item, like a broken laundry, um, basket. Um, at the same time, uh, you know, there's a lot of material in our waste stream currently. When we look at the comprehensive analysis and the composition of the solid waste stream from Connecticut D E P, and twenty-five percent of our waste stream is paper. And that can go in a single stream. Nearly between twenty-two and thirty percent is organic matter. Right there, you've reduced your solid waste by fifty percent. And then there's like, I don't have all the numbers in front of me, but there's twelve percent is, is metal, and, you know, five percent is glass. And there's a lot of material that if people start to be conscious about what it is that they have in their hand and they're looking to dispose of, instead of being really like, I'm just gonna throw this in my garbage, like a stained towel or an old set of sheets and an old comforter. All of that can be recycled for no extra cost. You have a textile bin at the transfer station, and you can put those textiles aside and put them there, no cost. And some might think that's a bulky item, but it's not, it's actually textile. And we can reduce our waste significantly by just the household items. And when you look at the composition of the solid waste stream, very little is actually bulky or considered bulky construction and demo. It's, I think about either between twelve and fifteen percent. So I, I would not imagine that you're gonna see this huge change and shift in bulky um, that people are trying to escape. Well, they're not going to, cuz they have to pay for the bulky anyway. They're gonna try to get it in that orange free bag. Um, or they're gonna say, oh, wait, this is an electronics, I can recycle electronics for free. It's a textile, I can recycle that for free. These are organics, I'm gonna put this in my organics container. This is taking a challenge, it's a behavior change, and change is hard. I understand that, but we are in a waste crisis in the state of Connecticut. And we are, have been, um, tasked as municipalities to take a look at this before it becomes a mandate to us and to say, we have to take the challenge. And, and it's not, it may not be easy for, for some. And for others, it may be like, oh, I've been doing this all along, and now I actually, I don't have to pay so much, uh, for my disposal, I get to pay for what I'm, I'm actually contributing. So I, I think we have to look at it as a positive and be, be willing to help give direction to those residents who might be confused on, what do I do with this? And I do also want to ensure that the H R A is part of this grant process. We have been given funds for a project manager whose sole job is to oversee your project in the town of Bethel and Newtown, and they will be on hand on the weekends, FaceTime.
Oh, we just lost you, Jen.
To be there for Q and A and have a table set up and just like interface. And if someone has a question, they can come over and talk to them and interact. And, and we can take those questions, and we can help facilitate a little bit of the questions and concerns as well, off the burden from the town. And it's just a pilot. And, and in the end, you know, part of phase three of the grant process is to create a proposal um, for permanency and/or this doesn't work for the town. We tried it, and it didn't work. Um, but we can at least try to give it a try the best that we can and ask the residents to take a challenge. And part of it is, you know.
Go ahead.
I was just, I would just lastly say, you don't have to change your transfer station fees either. You could keep your fees the way they are, and everyone pays their hundred and thirty and hundred and fifty dollars, and they get the two bags and take the challenge. And we're asking them to take the challenge. It's kind, it's just nice that if you, in fact, are going to save money through this pilot program, because they're, they do take the challenge and they have a waste reduction, and the town is saving, why not give that back to your community and that savings, is, I think, is the idea.
Right. And, and while it's, there's a pilot, and at the end of the pilot, we, you know, we would, and part of the requirements of the grant is that H R R A collects a lot of data and reports back on that data. So we're gonna be able to see that data and, you know, make decisions on it. But the reality of this is that this is coming. Whether it's in twenty-five or twenty-six or twenty-eight, this is coming. We are, gone are the days of thinking that we are going to continue, um, throwing away garbage the way that we've been throwing away garbage for the last two decades. Like Jen said, we're in a waste crisis. The whole reason why this, um, these pilot programs and this grant money is getting rolled out is to look forward and lean into fix, trying to fix this waste crisis. So eventually, in the next, you know, whether it's two years or five years, it's coming through legislation that we're gonna see a new model. And I think it's better to do it now with a lot of pub, a lot of support for the residents, a lot of, um, you know, a lot of messaging, a lot of FaceTime, a lot of, you know, Jen staff coming and being available versus, okay, this bill passed, and it's effective on October first, and now we have three months to white-knuckle this in, and everybody has to do it because it's the law. So this gives us a much more extended time to get people used to this new model, which is coming.
I, I have a few questions, if I may. So if someone does not want to participate, because this is voluntary, if someone does not wanna participate with these new numbers, so if, what I'm seeing is correct here, if you are a regular person or a senior, um, the hundred and twenty-five, the hundred and fifteen dollars, you pay that, and you continue doing what you're doing currently.
We're giving everyone the hundred and four bags, so that will get them two bags per week for each household. And we're asking everybody to take the challenge. If people decide that they don't wanna take the challenge, and they wanna use those two bags and fill up more bags, um, that would be unfortunate, but it would be their, um, their choice.
So everyone in the town are getting these bags, whether they participate or not?
No, 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 if you're a permit holder, if you buy a permit for the transfer station, that's where they get the three fifty-one and the three oh three.
Okay.
You have to buy a permit to get the bags.
Get the bags, yep, okay.
Cuz other, otherwise, people who aren't permit holders are curbside. They have their garbage done curbside, and they have a hauler that picks it up, and that's, we don't see that waste, that waste doesn't come into H R A, into our, um, stream.
Is, is it possible for those people that in the future, they also are going to be asked to have organics by the curbside and stuff like that? I mean, is it, is that what might happen?
And so if I understand your, your question is that, um, with the state mandate that everyone would have access to um, organics collection, either at the curb at their transfer station. That was the proposal this year in the legislative session, that all haulers had to, um, provide curbside collection of organics, and municipalities had to provide access to organics to their residents. Um, that, it didn't pass this year, but I assume it will come back next year in a different form. And it could be that, um, that every town just has to provide access. It doesn't necessarily mean that you yourself, it could be that you have, you, you contract with someone like a private hauler, or you contract with another town to take the residence. There's lots of different ways to be creative in regards to having access for your residents as we do for other materials that's now. Like, we are required by state laws, municipalities to provide, um, disposal for motor oil, but not all towns take motor oil at their transfer station. But they've provided, um, access through maybe a local retailer. So access can mean different things, but you still, it is still a mandate. Um, and then it, it might be a little trickier on the hauler's side just because of the infrastructure and assets. And it, and if it is created as a mandate, would likely be much further out to give the opportunity for these private business owners to build the infrastructure with their assets, their various types of vehicles in order to provide that as a service to the residents. Um, I just wanna go back real quick to what Glenn was saying about what, what happens if someone says, screw it, I'm not gonna do this, I'm not gonna participate, I'm just gonna throw it away as much as I want. In the first year during the pilot, it would be unfortunate, as Jean said, but that's why we were conservative. I mean, if everyone, if everyone did pay as you throw, and everyone was conscious about what they threw away, and they store separated all of the various materials in the current waste stream that doesn't have to be waste, we'd actually reduce our waste by ninety percent. Only ten percent of the actual waste stream is true solid waste. It's quite interesting when you look at the composition, but we know everyone's not gonna do that, right? And, um, so we're gonna be conservative and say, worst case is twenty-five percent, but we know we could get to fifty-four um, percent, because that's a pretty good average across the country and, and, um, communities that really embrace it. Um, because you're always gonna have those folks who don't care. And, and, you know, that's their prerogative, but we want those are the folks that in the following year, if it became permanent, well, they should have to pay for that. If they don't care, they should have to pay for what they, for everything they throw away. And those who are very conscious should not have to pay for everyone else's trash, which is what is happening now, where everybody pays a hundred and fifty dollars. And everyone's paying for each other's garbage. So, um, it, that's, that's where those numbers come from, being conservative.
And, and where are the food scraps going? Where is this composting happening?
Yep, so the, um, proposal right now, I've received a few, um, responses from vendors. The material would be collected weekly on a Monday, and it would be taken to New Milford, to New Milford Farms, which is an indoor windrow composting facility, they make compost. In the spring of twenty-four, the plan is to give compost back to the community, to the participants at the transfer station. So if you have a transfer station permit, um, and you've been participating in this program, you'll have access to, or compost that you can use in your, your yard.
Okay, so initially New Milford, but as we, as we continue with this process, it could go back to the residents of Kent?
Yes, well, in, in the going back and, and, you know, be, being sent offsite to be made into compost and bringing back to the community. Similar model to what we started in other communities, in Bridgewater, New Fairfield, Newtown, Redding, and Ridgefield and Wilton, they all have organic drop-off programs. Um, the first one started in two thousand and thirteen, and the most recent was last year in Wilton. The one change is the town of Ridgefield, we've created, through a grant, through a USDA grant, a significant grant, we, um, built a solar-powered A S P system that forces air through the pile, and it, um, it speeds up, accelerates the decomposition of the compost within thirty days. And then it sits for another thirty-nine, sixty days to cure, and then that compost is giving out. They have, um, since January of this year diverted ten tons of sol, of organics, and they've given out fourteen cubic yards of compost to the community um, that cost the town nothing. And, uh, the entire system was paid for from the, the skid steer to the trommel that screens the compost to the solar power unit, to everything, was paid for by the grant. And the only thing that Public Works is doing is they spend a couple hours every week maintaining the pile. Um, we know that the town of Kent doesn't have that space to take such a project on, but there are other resources that the town could look into during this pilot year, which is in-vessel composting. Um, depending on the amount of tonnage that we receive through the pilot, how many tons of organics do we have to actually manage? We would size out an in-vessel system, and you could actually be composting in-vessel, no odor, no vectors. It's not composting, it's in, in the traditional sense. And creating compost that you could give back to the community, reducing the cost of offsite disposal, so T and D, your transportation and your disposal cost. So this number here, um, oh, I don't have the other spreadsheet here. I have another spreadsheet from other numbers that talk about what it would cost for offsite after the pilot to the town versus what you're costing now for M S W. And, um, you, you would actually completely take that number away if you, if did onsite, which is what we did for Ridgefield. Ridge, Ridgefield has no transportation and disposal cost any longer for their organics collection.
And that, that was my next question, like, how much would it cost the town of Kent to transfer this to New Milford, um, and back? Um, and, um, if we had something onsite, it'd be nothing, uh, but right now, at least a start, it'll cost something?
So for the pilot, the pilot itself, from the funds coming from Connecticut D E P, it cost the town nothing during the pilot program. The pilot, the pilot will cover all of transportation and disposal, all of the kits, the organic bags. Everything is covered in the, in the cost of the grant, the pilot. And in the future, that's where we would play around and create proposals based on actual numbers on how does it work for the town so that there is no loss in revenue.
Gotcha.
Uh, expenses would be reduced, but no loss in revenue, and what would be the cost per bag for their, um, permatee going forward versus a full annual one-size-fits-all? Um, and there's something else that you said that was like, oh, that's a good point, um, the cost of.
So, so, sorry, so part of the grants that, that we're getting, that'll, that'll help offset those costs. Um, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see the second trash talk, but I did watch the first one. And, uh, so that fifty-five thousand is not permanent, uh, correct? So that, that, that will dry up at some point? So we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to manage that onsite at some point in, in the future. So these, these, these organics will have to be here, unless we come up with another system.
No, we can continue to, to contract with, um, the vendor. We don't have, we wouldn't have to um, manage those materials onsite once the pilot's over.
Correct, it's just an option, I'm saying you'd have two, you'd have two options. You can continue to do offsite and pay for that cost of transportation and disposal, just as you pay for cost and transportation and disposal for M S W. Or you could reduce that cost by having onsite. It's a decision the town could make as you're going through this pilot, as you're experiencing, um, what would make sense for the town. Understanding that the cost of disposal for, for tonnage, this doesn't include the pull, the cost of transporting, but this is the disposal cost for M S Ws. Currently ninety-nine thirty-nine, next year it will go to a hundred dollars ninety-five. And organics is, hovers between forty-five and fifty-five dollars a ton. So it's half the cost per ton to dispose of organics, which is the heaviest material in our waste stream. Um, so automatically, when you pull the heaviest material, which is made up of a lot of water, you've already, there's a, there's a significant savings there on the cost of disposal. On the cost of disposal. Um but you can even reduce your cost even further if you. If you decided as a municipality to do onsite composting.
Okay.
Which is possible, which is becoming a very trendy thing across the state. A lot of towns are taking that on on. You utilizing their leave, they come in. I know the town does not accept leave, so it might be a a completely different ballgame for the town of Kent.
With towns our size who um who are in this program or do similar things um and who who have organics, how much space? Is needed and and where where does that happen in towns? Do we do we know?
Right, the town of Bridgewater isn't doing onsite composting, but they do accept organics and it's the footprint of four feet by four feet. I mean, it's just a couple of. Toter. Well, they do a two yard uh dumpster, but some of the towns just do toters, which is probably what you would do if we went with the proposal from curbside compost. They provide thirty two gallon toters um and they bring clean toters when they take the full toters.
Okay.
So the pub the um transfer station operators are not left with managing dirty.
Hmm.
Um empty containers.
You're attracting.
Service they provide.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And I imagine it would be something that. Um so we would get a number of months into the pilot, Jen would, you know, we'd start generating data. Around the same time where budget season would be starting and that would be the. Really the time where you would start having that conversation of um with Rick. Do we move to the onsite um composting or continue with the offsite? Cause it would have to be obviously budgeted. There would be.
Or do we get another grant?
Or we could get another.
So I I that's how I implemented the onsite composting for Ridgefield and I just received a grant on the behalf of the town of Newtown. To create an onsite composting facility. Um the good news is that the H R A also applied for the E P A grant. For both infrastructure for transfer stations as well as public education. It was a total of over six million dollars for the region. And we did just receive um confirmation that we passed the first phase of eligibility. That's really great news. And if we receive that grant, there would even be more money that we could put into the town of Kent to uh push this further. Great opportunity to to run a pilot when you have money.
With municipalities who have had this for a few years, um i- is is has been a gradual um increase. Uh over time or I mean, were some municipalities, I mean, could some municipalities get to fifty four percent in one year or is that unrealistic in one year? I mean, what's uh what's what's a realistic number for a pilot program for Kent for one year, do we think?
Right, so you so you're referring to that pay as you throw aspect of it and. Um you're the first town to initiate a true pay as you throw system that that's new because of the system that you already have in place. All the other towns. Are um already have a pay as you throw system and they've always done it that way. Um so there's nothing to compare to within the region, but you can compare it to, and I'm happy to provide to you. The other scenarios of the other towns throughout the country in our neighboring states. Um and even in in the state of Connecticut, um Stonington uh implemented a unit based pricing system. It's called several different things, smart, unit based pricing, pay as you throw, save as you throw, about the same thing. Um. They reduced significant amount of waste. I'm gonna say it was at least fifty percent. I'd have to go back and look at those numbers. But they made a significant impact to their solid waste stream by implementing pay as you throw.
Okay.
Jen, do you know if that's Stonington and North Stonington combined?
I don't know that answer.
Okay, cause the the geography over there gets um.
Hmm.
A little funny when you look at just Stonington's population. I just looked it up in a quick Google search. And I remember this from my days at O E M S. There's actually only nine nine hundred and ninety residents in or. Just just over a thousand residents rather, but including North Stonington. It pops up another roughly five thousand and I think it was um, cause I was looking for a comparison. I think that's. I think it's both the towns combined. It's a little bit larger than our town.
The uh goatee.
Yeah, dude. He I was just like, I honestly don't know the best way to hold this.
Hey, thanks, Rick. So Joyce, I know you mentioned you some questions that you had. You wanna?
Yeah, so my first question is if you're letting everybody participate in it. Aren't your numbers gonna be somewhat skewed because there is gonna be a portion of people that aren't gonna participate? I thought originally you were going to actually know, like, let's say two hundred people actually were participating in the program. So then you'd get true numbers on the amount and the tonnage and that sort of thing. You can.
So every every participant, every perma tea is going to be asked to participate. It's not mandatory.
Correct, I understand.
The numbers aren't and the the numbers aren't skewed because that's why we did low estimates, knowing that not everybody will participate. And not everybody will take the full challenge. Um we, that's why we have three different scenarios here. So in the worst case scenario, that you have a a smaller number of participants, you're gonna go here. Versus if maybe everyone participates and really takes the challenge.
But wait, but out of the six hundred and fifty four people, you won't know exactly how many people are participating. It's not like you're selling a permit. Just a a specific permit for people who want to participate in that program versus somebody who doesn't want to participate in that program, correct?
Correct, and there's different ways you could, you could do it. You there, the town of Newtown has decided that they're going to have a different container. What they're gonna do is exactly the same thing that Ken is doing. Every perma tea gets the bag.
Hmm.
And but they're not gonna keep track of who's actually participating.
Okay.
And but what they are going to do is they're gonna have a different dumpster and all the orange bags are gonna go in the orange dumpster and all the non-orange bags are going to go in a different dumpster. And then they're, but they have a scale. Um they're gonna weigh that the orange bags versus the non-participants and. That's their way of, they they've made that decision on their own to that's their data point. Um. And you know, you you'll probably have a visual, you're gonna uh Rob and Rick will probably see folks coming with only orange bags out of their car. And they're gonna see folks that coming in an orange bag and a black bag. Um. And that's okay. The whole idea is getting folks to get used to taking the challenge. It's we're not forcing this. We're saying. This is a little bit of a competition. You're giving up, you're getting a hundred and four free garbage bags. Use these hundred and four free garbage bags. It might be in the beginning, you see all orange bags and everyone's participating until someone runs out. And then if they run out, the town has the option of either um selling the bags at the cost of thirty one cents. Or selling them at a dollar a piece to cover some of your additional cost and revenue. Um and it also gets them into the habit as an individual participant that, oh, if I use more bags, I have to pay for more bags.
And there was also, you know, we did also talk for a quite a while, a number of times. About sort of the, you know, how do we change behavior? And when we were talking about doing it as um, you know, whoever wants to. Participate in the pilot, they get the orange bags. People who don't wanna par- participate, they don't get the orange bags. And immediately, you're now creating the us and the them, and we don't wanna do that. We don't want to have people who are driving up to the transfer station and looking at people who aren't using. The orange bags in a different way that those are. And instead by inviting everybody to take the challenge and. And coming from the space of, we're all gonna do this together and we encourage everybody to do this. I it it, the sense was that it was a more inclusive way to um to walk through this. You know, again, we're trying to change behavior rather than partitioning off, you know, the the. The people who don't wanna do it and the people who do wanna do it. And it's more likely if you're not convinced, but you're given those bags. You're more likely to say, you know what, I got these bags for free. Why don't I just put them in my garbage bag, in my garbage can in the kitchen and I'll see what happens. And you're more likely to change minds. For those who aren't quite there yet, by giving them the tools really to. That that we all are gonna need to succeed. So that was why we sort of changed from two different permit levels. And two different, you know, sort of sets of users to the one and everybody's encouraged and invited to to join the challenge.
And I would add to that, that um Waste Zero, who is the consultant hired by the state of Connecticut. Deep to oversee this with us, so that's additional support. It was by their recommendation over the hundreds and hundreds of pilot programs that they have implemented, that that's what you do. You give everybody the opportunity and give everybody the tool. You don't separate them, so we we've taken that seriously. The other thing that's important is, this isn't about the number of people that are participating. This is about the amount of trash we're generating. So um that is a more important number than, you know, six hundred versus four hundred. If we can see a reduction in our solid waste, um because understand out of that. Six hundred and fifty four, three hundred and fifty one are seniors, they're probably already throwing away one bag of trash a week. Um they're probably gonna under uh use. It would be more interesting is at the end of the year, how many bags do you have left over? Um so even if they are participating, it the the numbers, again, it the numbers don't matter. The number of people don't matter. It's the amount of trash that we've generated and this, these numbers are the ones that matter, the annual tonnage.
Right, that's what's gonna tell the story.
Okay.
Yeah.
And and to Joyce's point, we the these are approximations. We're we 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 don't know how many people are going to participate in this.
Right, and it's not the amount and it's not necessarily, that's not really the focus point. The focus point is. What happens to our M S W tonnage.
Sure.
Over time. And we're, you know, providing the incentive of the free bags. We're also providing the incentive of one year's worth of roughly twenty percent off your. Um annual permit fee. So there's, you know, multiple incentives.
Yes.
And Jen, the um the the permit fees, the senior and regular permit fees, those include the countertop. Organics collection bin, correct?
Yeah, so they'll also receive the one gallon um free vented container to collect organics. And they'll receive that like uh a annual supply of food scrap bags, bio bags, compostable bags. Whichever you wanna call them.
So we're giving them a financial incentive and we're giving them multiple tools to to take the challenge. And hopefully that will re- result in us getting one of those bottom percentage decreases, the thirty five or the fifty four. Rick, anything else?
Go ahead. I wanted to ask Jen if who's gonna be contracting the hauler for the compost that. You through the grant or is the town gonna do that? If we're gonna do it, that's gotta be decided pretty quick up here too.
Lost my audio, but I think Rick said something.
All right, who's gonna be signing the contract for the first year with the? Either curbside or the other company, so it's gonna be through the grant with you or do we have to sign it?
It'll be the different for me.
Do we have to vote on that though, or that's all still you? Selecting have to vote on it or?
Vote on.
Selecting that hauler, is that that's totally your choice, right?
It's part, I'm going after our main part.
Okay.
The contract is between H R and. See, I get on that's not. Nature is facilities. And we're taking the cost.
Lucas. I was gonna say, I think it's a worthwhile challenge to try. Try to move in that direction. Um I think that. At A C is gonna be to educate people. Um be nice not to leave that. Just to Rick and people at the transfer station, figure out a way to. Forget other, you know, maybe use the schools, the kids to take stuff home, you you know. I'm kind of a believer in. Putting some of the problems that we need to solve in the future in the hands of little kids too, so but. You know, I think we can be innovative in the way we educate the town to try to participate. I think it's worth doing.
Um. Yeah, and Jen has really um the, we on the board have enabled Jen, I think, more than. Ever to be able to take on all of this extra work. She's now got, do you have two or three? Folks, so she's got the specific project manager for this, that is, that we're only sharing with two or three other towns. And she also has an um outreach education coordinator. Um so they're, they're gonna have some. Really decent um resources to come and have face time with the public. And we're gonna do more of those trash talks, the the trash talk. Um gosh, was that this Tuesday, this past Tuesday night? I feel like it was forever ago. Um that was, it was so great. Um and it really outlines what the waste crisis means, where all your garbage goes, how it gets processed. It was just the right amount of detail, honestly. And I think those are gonna be. Um more tools that we refer people back to, um you know, the H R A website. We're gonna get our own. Landing page on the H R A website that they will manage for us. That's gonna have all of this information. That's part of the grant. Um so I think that Jen has the, you know, the tools that will be coming. Um that will help us succeed at this for sure.
Yeah, I'll I'll second that, Jean. I again, I didn't see the um the second trash talk, but I saw the first one and that was a very, very good for this meeting. So um so yeah, let's keep those up for the town.
I don't think that, you know. We still will have to look at down the road as we. How we respond as a town and whether we make changes. There may be expenses to. Realign the transfer station to, you know, and that's a conversation that Rick has to be a part of, obviously. But uh you know, I mean, if you're gonna have. Uh the. Different concepts that the town has to push and involve in that direction that we. We will have to look at the layout of the transfer station.
Yeah.
Stuff like that, but that's, I I think it's worth. Trying to move and see and and walk and hope that the people who use the transfer station respond.
Yeah, I think the next two to five years is gonna be an evolution in that whole sphere, in the transfer station and all the waste management. Cause there's more to come with tire E P R. Um. It's gonna be a lot for, um you know, it's gonna have to be considered annually in the budget and for Rick operationally and logistically. Cause he's got the footprint he's got and the limitations that he's got up there. Um so, but yeah, it's gonna. There's gonna be things that are gonna be changing.
So I would just add.
Jen, can you lean in a little bit more? You're like right on the cusp of a fading out.
Yeah, unfortunately. Be here now.
Yeah, we you you cut out for about five seconds there.
I've been having some issues hearing her for a while.
And now she froze up.
She froze up.
We can hear you. Your video froze up. Yeah, you're all muddled. Still all muddled. Well, I'm, while Jen's working that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put up a um a draft motion for us to consider. You guys see that little word document? Oh, she's gonna call in. She's gonna just change her audio. Yeah, I'll see that. Or you want me to make it bigger? Here, I'll make it a little bit bigger.
So I suppose, am I allowed to vote on this even though I might benefit?
Yes.
I won't tell you under what category. That would be age discrimination. Oh, sorry.
So, uh, Rick, did I get that age? Is the age correct for the seniors sixty-five?
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Rick.
So has anybody in the household that's not the permittee themselves, so?
So it is sixty-five, not sixty?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's something that's just, that's detailed in the application. I think we can continue to detail the application. This is really just the fee schedule, like the structure.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Joyce, I can get you this.
Hey, Rick, do you have any final thoughts on this? Any way we can help you as a board?
Clone him?
Uh, if this appears in the paper or something, just make sure that people realize that we're not gonna be selling any permits until we get the grant in place, that we have all the bags and everything.
Yeah, so that's an important piece to say out loud. Um, the process that, the, the contract with the state that it, that has to be gone through um is, as you can imagine, um cumbersome. Would you say that, Jen? And so the, the contract has to go um up to deep for comment, come back, back up to deep for their approval and then it has to go to the attorney general's office. And so there's a lot of this that's out of our hands. Jen cannot spend a penny on the grant um from the grant money until that contract is signed. So we're in just a, you know, basically a waiting mode for um that process to be finished. So what we'll likely do once we, if we pass this motion, I'll get out a newsletter and we have about probably over half, I think. I, I think there's four hundred or so emails for transfer station permittees, current permittees. We have in constant contact now. So between those two lists, Facebook, um, we'll get out um, just some messaging to the residents because people are really sort of anxious to get their permit. Some people are anxious to get their permits purchased. Um, some people are not. So just so we have that messaging out to people so they're not anxious. And if it takes until July fifteenth, then your current permit will be, you know, good until the new permit um comes out. Just so that people aren't worried about that.
We could put a, a separate bin in the transfer station where people can dump their anxiety.
Um, I can just add to that, that, you know, you are correct that we can't spend any more, any money. So I, I don't have supplies or I can't give out, although I've been talking to them about borrowing the supplies from another town and then purchasing them. There's a little, there might be that possibility, but this is, you are selling your permit. It's not a cost to the pilot. You could theoretically go ahead and start issuing your transfer station permit. We know we're getting the grant. We, we know that
True.
um, it's going to implement. Uh, so you could um sell your transfer station permits now. They're just not gonna get their bags and out, it, it, they would get their bags later. And the ideal situation was to give the permit and the bags and the kit all at the same time.
Hmm.
If you want to start selling your tickets, you can, you can do that. That's a decision you can make up after you've decided if you're gonna vote on this and, and approve it. Um, and then I'll let you move forward on the vote. And then I, I was, I was going to address something from Rufus before, but I'll, I'll wait until the end.
Okay. So are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion to set the annual transfer station permit fees for fiscal year twenty-four to reflect the fee schedule in the motion, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. Motion passes. Joyce, I'll get you that motion. You had, we are, Joyce, I mean, Jen?
Yeah, I just wanted to be able to address, and I apologize for the technical um problem. Um, I want to ensure that Rufus had a very good point in regards to, yes, I agree that it can be a headache to educate and that is one of the major things we are tasked with as your waste authority is educating the public. Um, and I have been very fortunate this past year to receive more funding for additional staff. The town of Kent will have out their access, okay, so Rick and Rob and any of your transfer station operators are not doing this on their own. We will be doing it on, for you on, on your behalf with our in-house staff, with our um paid consultant staff as well as Waste Zero paid for by Connecticut Deep. So you're gonna have a lot of hands-on folks at your transfer station, face-to-face, one-on-one. We're going to um actually go into the schools. We already go into Kent School, but we're gonna add this as part of our presentation now, our annual presentation. Um, a lot of social media, Kent Center, I'm sorry, um, videos on the how-to. And um, so that's important. So you're gonna have a physical human being helping. We're gonna use all the various technologies. And then last but not least, I think what's important is um that there's a change also our concept of what transfer stations mean to our municipalities. And as someone who's been doing this a long time, I find it really fascinating that um we as towns, we spend all these, we, we have our tax dollars uh given to the town to cover our roads and uh, you know, salt them and pave them and sand them and there's no revenue. It, this is just, it's a service we provide as municipality. And all the employees at town hall and at the public works, they're all a cost to the town. It's a service we're providing. The transfer station is also a service that you're providing to the residents of the town. There's material that is accepted at the transfer stations that can't be taken at the curb. And you know, there are some things can, does and doesn't do based on cost, like other towns, but that will change because of extended producer responsibility policies like tires and propane tanks. You can't put that at the curb. It's a service we're providing the residents to ensure proper end-of-life management. And there, there is a cost to that. Um, the unique thing about our transfer stations is we actually can gain revenue. Where we can't gain revenue paving roads or salting or sanding our roads or even the employees that you have at town hall. Um, the nice thing is you can offset those costs to the transfer station. Most transfer stations don't make money. It is a lock to the town because it's a service you're providing. And there are towns that do everything they can to have a, a neutral net zero um cost. So they look at all of everything and if it costs them five dollars to get rid of a propane tank, they charge their residents eight dollars. There's lots of ways to look at that to gain either revenue or to make a decision that this is a service that you're going to provide to the residents. So I just want to put that in the back of your mind while you're thinking about the future of the transfer station and any changes that might have to happen to align um with the program. I want to thank you also for your time today.
Thanks, Jen. Very much appreciate it. So we have one other item which is um in the folder, it's a, a notification from the tax collector about her end of year um account balances under um what is it, eighteen-eight? General statutes.
You don't need me. I'm gonna leave.
Okay, thanks so much, Jen.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank.
Um, so she has twenty-three accounts that are, that have from one penny to five dollars um balance and under the statutes, the tax collector can, with approval from the Boris Leckman, um adjust those credit balances to zero and have the um twenty-six dollars and twenty-three cents be transferred to the tax refunds. So um we would make a motion to that um effect.
So moved.
I'll second that motion to approve adjusting the credit balances to zero and the twenty-six dollars and twenty-three cents be transferred to the tax refunds. Line one thirty dash three twenty. Any questions? Glenn Rufus? Alrighty, all those in favor? Fantastic. Hour and three, hour and one minute.
Who's counting?
Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alrighty. Second. And all those in favor? Aye. Thanks, everybody. Next special meeting, I believe next Wednesday. Have a good weekend.
You too.